Record. You guys heard that I did it, so. Um, okay, so I'm gonna go. I'm gonna go ahead and open up the school board, the Stratton School Board meeting. Today's date is October 1st, 2024. The time is 6:15. Oh, gosh, okay, here we go. In person, I have Melissa Walker. You have Jenny Ivanov, said that correctly?
Jenny Ivanov.
Oh, I killed it. I am recognized that terribly. I'm so sorry, sir. Um, Joe Frigo, Lorraine Weeks Newell, myself. And then online, I have Pietro Lynn, Candy Bernard, Meredith Block, Allison Peterson, and Bob Tebow, our superintendent. Um, where did my agenda go? It was on, oh, uh, so are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, I will move forward with that. Oh, note for Meredith Kelly and Devon will not be here tonight. Um, so we will move then into the second agenda item, which is the residency hearing. Um, basically, um, our attorney Pietro Lynn will open up for us. He'll explain the process, we'll go through everything. And then after that, we will have the three board members, um, Pietro and Pietro will have a deliberative session at that point. I, we don't have access to any of the offices, so everyone other than us three will have to leave the building. Um, so let me go ahead, turn this bad boy around. Okay, yeah, we are a little bit technologically. Let's see, there we go. All right, Pietro, we should be able to hear you.
Good, well, hello to everybody. Um, let, let me first start by explaining the process we are about to embark on. This is called a residency hearing, as you know, under Vermont law. Uh, school districts are required to pay tuition for residents, the children of residents of the district. And so the issue that we are going to be addressing today is whether, um, the parent, a parent of the students involved here is, either one is a resident of this district. If the answer is yes, then they are entitled to tuition payments, um, to a school of their choice. If not, then the board will issue a written decision subsequent to the hearing in which the board declines to accept residency and will notify you in writing of that. The issue that has to be decided again is domicile residency. And so the, the, the burden is on the party asserting residency to prove that it exists. And in this case, um, the parent has the responsibility of presenting affirmative evidence and arguments as to why, uh, he or she, that if the mother or the father, is a resident of Stratton. Now procedurally, the way that we will do this is that because the parent bears the burden of proving residency, the parent will have the opportunity to go first. And you will make whatever arguments you think you need to make, you will present whatever writings or other evidence to the board that you think is helpful in the board making that decision. The board will then, when you're done, have an opportunity to ask clarifying questions of you. Um, the, when, when that is done, the administration will have an opportunity to present its evidence and any arguments that go to why you might not be a resident of this district. And finally, because you, as the parent, bear the burden of proof, you'll have the last word. We call that rebuttal. And so you will have an opportunity to explain, um, all the reasons why you disagree with the presentation of the districts and present new evidence, if you think it is in rebuttal, to issues that are raised by the district. Um, that, that's the process we will follow. Please do not expect you will, you will not get a decision tonight. It will be sent to you in writing. So Allison, with that, I think we can turn the, oh, go ahead, if you have a question, please.
Normally, the procedure was a little bit different. It was starting with the administration presenting the determination. And then there was, uh, uh, an opportunity for a parent to speak. And then there were questions. So did anything change or is, is this, the procedure is the same? I just did not understand correctly what you were saying.
I, I, I don't know what you understand or don't understand. I'm telling you the procedure that we will follow tonight. And it's the procedure that we generally follow. Now, it could be that it was done differently earlier, that's possible. Um, but I would suggest to you that this is the better way, both for you and for the board. It's better for you because you talk first and last. You get the first word and the last word, and I think that that's probably something that is more advantageous to you.
Can I just ask a question, Pietro? Did you say, I just want to make sure I understood this, that, um, he's going to speak first and then we will ask him questions? And then after that, the administration speaks?
That's correct. That's correct. And, and then we go back to the parent, um, and he can, he can present whatever rebuttal he wishes. And then ultimately, the board will then go into deliberative session, um, with me and nobody else, uh, and then the board will make a decision.
Okay, thank you.
So, sir, you are, you are up and the board, um, would like to hear the arguments and the evidence you think support a contention that you are or your spouse is a resident of the district.
Awesome, thank you very much. So honorable members of the board, um, stand before you for the second time, asking you to recognize my residency at Stratton. So this is an issue that deeply affects not just myself, but my family and in particularly my son. So first of all, I propose to look at the facts, at the factual side of this topic. So earlier, I presented the documents that clearly supports my claim that I hold residency and maintain continuous presence in Stratton, Vermont. This was proof of my property ownership of the condo I own. Uh, my homestead declaration of the same property, my Vermont driver's license, car registration, utility bills, you name it. They, they are all listed in the affidavit concerning pupil residency. So I complied with the school board policy and I believe I complied with Vermont laws, including sixteen VSA, section 1075. So please also consider the human side of the issue. My son Ivan, he's a sophomore at Strad Mountain School. This past winter, he was ranked number one by NANSA among U-16 cross-country skiers. He represented Vermont at junior nationals. And that's his goal for the upcoming season as well. So I ask you to think of him and, uh, understand how your decision impacts his future. So additionally, this town is not just a place where Ivan goes to school. This is where he's building his future. And, uh, my family is invested in success of this community as much as you are. So for example, this summer, I've been maintaining the long trail, volunteering with the Green Mountain Club. I'm going to coach kids cross-country skiing with the West River Sports Association this winter. So this is just a fraction of how I'm contributing to community. So I believe you all permitted, committed to fairness and justice. To deny my residency despite clear and overwhelming evidence makes me wonder, does this align with those values? Is this serving the law equally for everyone? The US Supreme Court has repeatedly struck down unjust, uh, residency restrictions in cases like, uh, Sims versus Roe, uh, Sobel versus Williams, uh, Memorial Hospital versus Maricopa County. These rulings make it clear that arbitrary residency requirements violate fundamental rights. Deny my residency goes against these principles. I respectfully ask you to see the fact, feel the human reality of this. Please recognize that I'm a resident of Stratton. By doing so, you uphold to the law and to the values we all share of integrity and fairness.
You're all set for the moment? Okay, um, I really appreciate how seriously you're taking this. I, you know.
I'm extremely serious.
Yeah, no, no, I just said, I wanted to acknowledge how much work you've obviously put into this, for sure. Um, so I just want to, you know, it's really tricky. Um, I know you were here last year, but, um, by design, the board is really kept out of it. We really don't know about you, other than sort of what you're telling us right in this moment. So I want to back up and just make sure that we're on the same page with everything, which is that you claim that you are living in Stratton currently with one child who attends SMS and you are looking for residency effective this year to start his tuition, starting back from September or August, or whatever it is that they started school.
Exactly.
That is correct, okay. All right, so I'm, I, Lorraine did just provide a copy of your, is that this year's?
I have two copies of both, a copy of both applications.
This one says he's in ninth grade, so I think this is last year's. Um, I don't know, um, but I just want to go through just for a second and make sure I have this correct. You are current, I, I'm not gonna try her name, Yana, I believe is her first name. This is your wife?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, there are two, I mean, two copies, one.
Same.
Yeah, both mine say nine.
So, but he's, technically, he's 10th grade this year. Okay, that's neither here nor there.
They're both sep, they're both applications. And this is two, right?
Always a bit tricky, no, he's ninth, he's ninth grade now, so, oh.
He's 14.
He's, no, he's 16.
He's 16. So sophomore.
Sophomore, yeah, as I said, yeah, sophomore.
So 10th grade. Um, okay, so just so we can get sort of a picture of your life. Now, you said, um, you participated this past summer in long trail maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, and then coming up, you're gonna do some coaching?
Yes.
Okay, um, what is it you do, sir? For work?
Fully.
Yeah.
Uh, I work for a company as a data scientist.
And that is fully remote?
Partially remote.
Fully remote, okay. Um, and is that the job you were doing last year?
Yes.
Okay, um, it says here that you are married. Where does your wife live?
My wife, uh, and my other kid, they live in Lexington, Massachusetts.
Wife and another child, a younger child?
Yes.
Okay, um, in public or private school?
Right.
In private school. How old is that child?
14.
14, um. So they live in a home that you previously lived in or a new home, a different home?
Um, they live in a home that we used to live together.
So like the, the children's childhood home is where those two people are still residing?
Uh, which child are we talking about?
Your, your, your children grew up in this house? The one in Lexington, for the most part, or for the past several years?
For the past, uh, like several years before moving to Stratton, I, before I moved, my, I and my son, Ivan moved to Stratton.
Yep.
They grew up in that house where my wife and my other son reside now.
Okay, um, talking about the house you live in now, you said it's a condo?
Yes.
How many bedrooms is this condo?
It has, uh, three bedrooms.
And what about the other house? How many bedrooms?
Uh, three.
Do you have a garage at the other home?
Uh, yes.
Do you have a garage here?
No.
All right, are there any other outbuildings or anything like that at your other home? Shed of whatever, pool, a pool house?
Just maybe a small shed for garden tools.
Okay. And there is no garage in this one, okay. Um, which home is bigger?
Oh, I guess technically the one in Lexington, but I mean, both are suitable for long-term residency and, um, yeah, it's everything we need.
Do you have any pets?
No.
Um. Um, where, do you have any belongings that are currently at your home in Lexington?
Just some clothes.
Okay. How much time do you spend down there?
Maybe like 10% of my time, no less.
And does your family come up here to visit?
Yes, definitely.
What does that mean?
I mean, every, every other weekend, maybe.
Where do they spend the summer?
So Ivan and I, we were mostly here because Ivan was attending, uh, summer training program with SMS. So there was a lot of driving back and forth and, uh, yeah, my wife and my other son, they visited us very often.
Does your wife work?
Yes.
Full-time?
Yes.
Um, so the question I have for you is, you, you did mention that you went through this with us last year. I have two questions about that. The first is, um, what from last year differs from this year? If anything, that you would like us to know about?
From last year? So I switched to fully remote because my company has a new policy that anybody who lives further than 50 miles from the office should kind of be remote. So that, uh, last year, the fact of I was remote, but there were some, based on manager, my manager's discretion. So this time, like, I, I had fully cleared to work remote. Uh, yeah, so otherwise, of course, this time I filled the homestead declaration because when it came and I filed, uh, taxes this year in Vermont.
Homestead was filed, and you just said you filed your, like, your, uh?
Taxation.
Okay. In Strat?
Mm-hmm.
Um. Question, um, still about the past one, the past application. Last year, we went through this, I remember it, and, um, we, we had a residency hearing last year and the, um, the, it was denied. And as I recall, you hit some, as I recall, I thought that I had seen something come down from the AOE about you going up there, but then nothing happened with it. Can you explain what went on there?
Oops.
Thanks.
You, you must know that, that Vermont has a new secretary of education now.
Yeah.
So, can I add the dots?
I don't know what that means.
The other secretary went away, new secretary came in. My case just was caught in between them and it was not addressed.
And there was no follow-up, no?
I will follow up if it's necessary.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. You, you went to the AOE requesting an appeal?
I know, as much as you know.
I just want to make sure.
I know from public news that we have a new secretary. A plus B. I understand that people who talked to me at the time just disappeared from the office and now there are other people.
And so there was a formal request made for a residency hearing by you?
Yes.
To which it was responded originally by the AOE?
Yes.
And then nothing ever? And did you pursue it with them after that?
After some considerations, I decided to reapply this year and act based on the results of this application.
So you just, just moved forward? Like, let it go and moved forward? Is that what I'm understanding?
I moved forward, but, yeah, this is something that should have happened, but didn't happen.
Okay, um, how long has Ivan been going to SMS?
Well, so this is his second year full-time and before that, he was, uh, here for winter term.
Once or twice?
I believe twice.
So he did seventh and eighth grade, winter term, and then he went full-time ninth grade last year, and now this year he is full-time sophomore? That's correct, okay. Um. Uh, I'm trying, there was something, I had another, oh, yes. Um, are you and your wife still married?
Yes.
And do you have any plans to divorce?
Uh, at this point, I can't speak of any such plans.
Okay, um, your home in Massachusetts, has it ever been on the market?
Um, no, since we bought it.
Okay, and do you have any intention of selling that home at this point?
I never thought about it.
Okay, how about your condo? Do you have any intention of selling it?
Absolutely not.
Do you own any other properties?
No.
Just the two?
Yes.
Um, I have asked all the questions that I need to ask. I don't know. If you guys have any burning questions?
I just asked, does your wife work remotely?
Uh, her work requires her presence in the office every other week.
And that's one day or the whole week?
Whole week.
Okay.
And, uh, yes, I'm just applying for my residency here. Um, I, I just want to make it clear that she is out of this question. She, she's a resident of, uh, Massachusetts and she will, uh, continue to be so at least for this upcoming year.
Um. I'm trying to think if there's anything else, just before we get, before we pass the torch here on, is there anything like, just one like, that you think we should have asked you that we didn't? That you'd like, you want to let us know?
I guess I spoke for myself and I told everything that I wish you to know at this time, so.
I know. Um, Pietro, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Yeah, so, um, now that the parent has completed his presentation, it's the administration's opportunity to present the evidence they think that the board ought to be aware of.
That's you, Lauren, that's me, yeah. Okay, um, Mr. Ivanov, do you mind if I refer to your wife as Mrs. Ivanov?
Uh, her last name is, uh, she has a different last name.
I know, but I can't.
That's fine.
Is it, is it all right?
Yana, that's her first name.
Her name is, yeah, her name is Yana.
Yeah.
Yes, I'll refer to Mrs. Yana.
Okay, that's fine.
Um, okay, um, I typed up, um, a review of the information, which includes the two applications that were provided. The first back in 2023 and the one most recently known. The dates of the submitted and denied, uh, residency, residency application, the first was done on September the 11th, 2023, and it was denied in September, uh, September 28th, uh, 2023, that's the date on the letters. Um, the second application was, um, uh, submitted on May the 25th of 2024. And it was, um, you received a letter, um, dated in July 29th of 2024. There was a, um, a delay. I know you contacted me in the, um, fact that you had not heard anything. And somehow it had gone, but it had been misplaced, um, at the supervisory board, but then it was acted on as soon as I questioned it. So the first application I'd like to address, um, to go back and just go over what information I had at that time, I was trying to compare the two applications as best I could. Um, so the first application of, um, Ju, um, September the 11th, 2023 reads, "Mr. Ivanov submitted the first application in August of 2023. He was applying for residency for himself and his son, who was attending SMS as a boarding student. Mr. Ivanov has a younger son who was not included in the application. He would continue to attend school and live with his mother in Massachusetts. Mrs. Yana was not applying for residency with her husband. She stated in her portion of the application that it was her hope to eventually retire in Stratton. She also stated that home ownership had brought them here. The application was forwarded to the Wyndham Central Supervise Reunion and based on the information provided in the application, a letter of denial was mailed to Mr. Ivanov. Um, Mr. Ivanov appealed to the Stratton School Board, but was denied." Okay, uh, that's, that, that was the first, um, application information that I had. Second application was presented in May 25th of 2024. Mr. Ivanov submitted a second application for residency tuition, or residency slash tuition. Aside from a donation confirming and a copy confirmation, a donation confirmation and a copy of a Vermont Department of Motor Vehicles registration, the second application mirrored the first in the information provided. Ownership of the property continued in Massachusetts, where his wife and other son have primary residence. It was again stated that she lives outside of Stratton, but sees her son and enjoys her time here. Mrs. Ivanov, Mrs. Um, Yana, and her younger son do not intend to become residents of Stratton. Student Ivanov, um, let me just say here that, um, I did contact SMS to ask them about, um, his, um, being a day student or a boarding student. In other words, day student, he lives with you, and in boarding, he's there. Um, she said that he was a boarder at SMS for seventh and eighth grade, winter term, 21, 22, and a day student during the 23, 24 school year. He is presently a day student at SMS. I requested a current property tax bill here at the town office for year 2024. I did not have that in the, um, information given. Um, it lists the tax rate based on a non-homestead education rate. Mr. Ivanov's Vermont vehicle registration expired on the last day, yesterday of 20, September of 2024. A Vermont withholding tax return for transfer of real property lists the Massachusetts property as the mailing address for both Mr. Ivanov and Mrs. Yana. The 2024 Vermont Homestead Declaration and Property Tax Credit Claim also shows the Massachusetts home as the mailing address. Based on the information submitted and forwarded to the WCSU, Mr. Ivanov's second application for residency was denied. Um, I have provided the board members here and yourself a copy of the documents that I reviewed, that were given to me here, um, for the school board and, um, the, the letter I've composed more or less reviews and, and mirrors what information I was given. So that's all that I need to say for that.
Does Bob have a, oh, hang on, someone's coming into the waiting room, just a second place. Um, does Bob have anything to add? I don't know if he does, or if it just mirrors Lorraine's.
Um, yeah, I mean, the only, the only thing I was just gonna highlight, um, from my analysis of the paperwork, uh, is the two Vermont tax forms that were submitted, both include Lexington address. Um, and just underline that point that that appears to be, um, based on, putting out a tax form, that appears to be the address used as the, as the home address there, for it seems to me that that's some illegal home address and not a residency in Stratton. That would be my, my takeaway from that.
All right, Pietro, what, uh, what, what do we do now?
Yeah, so now we, we go back to the parent and the parent has an opportunity to submit anything else that he believes that the board ought to hear before it goes into deliberative session. It is a rebuttal of anything that the administration may have said.
Can we ask questions after that or no?
You, you may, but only on issues that were raised in the rebuttal.
Oh, okay, thank you.
All right, I'll take it away. So I'll start with a easy question about the car registration. So I have, uh, renewed. And, yeah, you can make a copy after the meeting.
Okay.
So that's an easy question. So then regarding the address. So that's an easy question. So then regarding the addresses on, uh, and names on the Homestead Declaration. So. I don't know if you have a tax expert here. I guess I'm the only one then. So, uh, we are filing tax, taxes together with my wife jointly, and, um, yes, filing jointly, this is the cross here. And, uh, of course, there are many traces of, uh, this mailing address, thirty-eight Monroe Row, including in, uh, the tool that she's using for tax filing, and why shouldn't she, she, uh, like, can she keep this address? Because she lives there actually, and she is part of this, uh, tax return. So this I, this is, uh, this I hope explains why this address appears on Homestead Declaration. Then, uh, besides that, there's another address, the address of the property, and, yeah, only my name. So I guess this is, uh, can be easily explained and, um, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm just pulling up a copy of that.
I go through everything.
Can I, can I see that one?
Absolutely, yes.
Thanks. Sorry, short.
Where's the tax desk?
Uh, see, this is the second page, but.
So the mailing. The mailing address is listed as Lexington. Okay.
And here's this right here, there you go.
And the mailing address with both of your names.
I just got this today, some candy, I mean, yeah.
Um.
I thought those were, that's what I had.
All right, yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure I was understanding what, what was being, so, yep, I got it, thank you. Sorry, registered, and then the homestead and the, and the filings? Sorry, sorry, you can continue.
Uh, yeah, so I believe this addresses all the material concerns that were raised by, uh, residency coordinator, Lauren. Yeah, and if there's, uh, maybe I missed something, just let me know.
So I'm not a tax expert, but I'm happy to admit that. So I just wanna get it straight in the sense that, so you paid Vermont income tax and property tax based off the Homestead Act that you applied for, for your Vermont condo? But you're still filing jointly with your wife in Lexington?
Yes, so she's my tax expert.
Okay.
And, uh, that's what I received. And then there was a taxi, yeah.
And do you use, um, any tax services that are there, and do you have, like, higher, like, where, uh, the bank branches that you use are those in Lexington?
No, so I'm using a bank, which is in Washington DC, and I provided a check, voided check with my with this address.
With your Vermont address.
To be clear, so the reason why the address is Lexington is because your wife is the one who fills out your taxes?
Yes.
And she filled it out in it?
Anything else?
I mean, if these were the only concerns regarding my residency, then I hope you have all the information, all, all the facts to make, um, just and the decision, fair decision about my residency.
Yeah, I guess, I guess for me too, like, and another question that I've heard in, um, that we ask is just like, when the holidays come up, right, and you're coordinating with your family about where, like, home is and where you want to spend home? Have you found that in the past two years of your residency, have you been, have you, have you found your family gravitating towards Stratton, or have you been gravitating more, more towards Massachusetts? And, and if so, Massachusetts, is that because there's a extended family in that area?
So for us as a family coming from Russia, our main holiday is New Year. Last year, we celebrated it in Stratton. This year? Next year, I, I don't know yet. We are also very badly planning to have such things.
Okay, well, it sounds like that is the completion of the presentations and evidence. And Allison, I, I think the board should now move to go into deliberative session.
Right, so we just need a motion, correct?
That's correct.
Actually, Allison, before you do that, my question for you is, since you're going into deliberative session and I'm not going in, do you?
I don't need to.
You know, all right, thank you, buddy, have a good night.
Um, do we need a second, Pietro?
No.
Okay, um, so I just need a motion, please.
Not going to deliberative session, executive session.
Deliberative session, thank you, Melissa, at six fifty-one P M. So what I have to do, because I have failed at this before, I'm gonna do it, though. You're gonna see me.
Turn off the recording.
Oh, yeah, but you have to pause it. You have to pause the. I feel like I did this.
Allison, you're, you're a champ.
You have, like, this became such, I, like, lost half of a meeting after a deliberative session that went into executive session, and then I lost a, a, like, forget it, forget it. Now B C T V does our meetings, and that's that. So seven oh two, we are out. Hang on, let me, I don't know who Richard Cleaner is, um.
So Allison, I'm gonna sign off, right? You don't need me anymore.
No, I'm just, I'm coming out of executive session, we'll, we'll say seven oh three, because I opened up the, um, I brought everybody back in.
All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you, Pietro, have a good night, um. Someone named Richard Cleaner is on here. I don't know who that person is, but Meredith, if you could note that after the executive session, um, we have someone else who has joined us. Um, and at some point during this meeting, I did admit Helen Nault, but she is not here anymore, and that's Nault, N-A-U-L-T, but she's not here anymore, um, okay. Out of deliberative session, um, we will go ahead, uh, decisions will go over to Bob. Bob will proceed with letters to, um, and I, I brutalized his name, Ivanov, I guess, how you would say in America. Um, the order went somewhere. Allison had this for us. I think everybody signed it. This one was a juicy one, because it was all the tuition. Um, we did have, it should be noted along with this tuition, that there was a residency appeal that went up to the A O E that was approved. So I believe there are three students who will be, um, admitted in three? Two, three? Allison can probably. As three, um, one, let me say, two, three, yeah, um, who we will, uh, are additional members of the district, and then I did receive an approval. Williams Wilkinson, um, I'm not sure, I don't remember the last name. So we did have another residency that was approved for students. I don't know, Allison, are you here? Do you know how many, uh, kids that, that other residency was?
So the one that was approved was the Wilson family with two students, and then the Rebus family with three students, and then the Reed family with one student, so I guess it's six new students.
Woo, that is, that is in October. We knew about Sean Reed, though. That one we knew about, okay. Um, thank you, Allison, for that. And you know what? I saw that you sent an email tonight, um. We're, we're in your section, we're in your, your order and treasurer stuff. What was the, the email you sent?
Um, so it was just a fiscal year twenty-four profit and loss that Heidi had sent over from the supervisory union. So basically, the key takeaway is that we ended last fiscal year with a surplus of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
So that will be used in future tax years to buy down the tax rate if necessary, or when necessary, I guess I should probably say.
Yeah.
And then the other was just a profit and loss for this year, but it was only through September, so it didn't even include the checks that you're approving tonight. So there was nothing really notable there.
Um, when do we schedule our talk about meeting? Is that December?
Um, so Heidi actually just emailed me tonight. She wants to meet with me at the end of October to start the budget process, so probably November, December, yes.
So we don't have to worry about that meeting before next, scheduling that before the November fifth meeting?
Correct, I would plan on it maybe at your December meeting. I will talk to Heidi and report back at next month's meeting.
Okay, all right, first one without Lori.
I know, maybe she'll tag along, because she's still down there, but we'll see.
Yeah, yeah. Allison, thank you always. You always do so much work for us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, but your order is signed, yep, we're all set. And that, I saw you sent that over to Meredith, so Meredith can put that in the minutes for us. Um, oh, you know what? I didn't have us on the agenda approve minutes. We owe minutes back from September, sorry. Next meeting, um, Meredith, if you could put that in the minutes, that I, we need to approve the September ones as well, that would be stellar. Um, any other business that can come before the board? Hearing nothing, um, the time is seven oh seven, please, if someone would adjourn the meeting or a motion to.
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone in TV land. Have a sensational evening. Okay, I feel like I really did this. Are you sure you wanna stop recording the cloud?